Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Ready? Tech ready?
For real.
I'm calling this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. Welcome to Wednesday, October 22nd, a regular meeting of the Milani YPO Melo Manu Neighborhood Board Number 25. We are here, Milani High School H Building. This meeting is being broadcasted online, live on WebEx, and being held in person here in H Building. Without further ado, I'd like to invite you all to stand, if you are able, so that we can all recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so as mentioned, this is a hybrid meeting, again, meaning that it is being both held online and in person. So, out of respect to all members of the public and our Milani Board members who are here online, on WebEx, as well as those in person, what I'd like to ask is for everyone to raise their hands so I can recognize you, so that we can respectfully and efficiently recognize everyone's time. This extends to both the Board members, as well as the members of the public. And I'd like to take or recognize our Neighborhood Board Assistant Rachel, so that she could provide the roll call, so we can establish quorum. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. When I call your name, please let me know if you're present. Bass?
Present.
Thank you. Harmadi?
Present online.
Thank you. Flores?
Here.
Here, okay. Freed? Oh, I see her online. Thank you. Gustafson?
Here.
Thank you. Inoy?
Present.
Thank you. Ka'nehe?
Present.
Thank you. Ka'apanaaki? Right. Thought I saw her online, but we can check again later. Okay. Kim? At here. Kanar?
Present online.
Online, thank you. Kupuka'? At here. Darsha Lee? Absent. Marilyn Lee?
Here.
Here, thank you. Nagamune?
Here.
Present, okay. Alex Ozawa?
Present online.
Thank you. Then Catherine Ozawa?
Present online.
Thank you. And then Park?
Present online.
Thank you. Ross?
Present online.
Thank you. Sigura?
Present in person.
Thank you. Smart? She said she was gonna come in late. Well, check again later. And then Sursina?
Present online.
Thank you. And then Williams?
Present online.
Okay, let me just double-check everything. So we have 18 members present. Meet the quorum.
Thank you, Rachel, noting 18 members present. We'll go right into monthly reports. First up, I'd like to welcome Honolulu Fire Department.
Aloha, gang. I'm Captain Sean Tatiishi from Milani Fire Station, Third Watch. And these are the statistics for September 2025 and the message, the safety message for 2025. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response search tool on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov. If you have any questions, please email hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So statistics for September 2025. Structure fires, three. Wildland slash brush fires, four. Nuisance fires, three. Cooking fires, one. Activated alarms, no fire, eight. General emergencies, medical, 55. Motor vehicle crash slash collision, four. And a safety tip and announcement for September. It's about seasonal decorations. With the holiday season just around the corner, consider fire-resistant, non-combustible decorations. Choose only underwriters, laboratory-approved electrical decorations and follow manufacturer's instructions for installation and load. Use lights that are in good repair. Always turn off lights before leaving your home or going to bed. Do not overload power strips, surge protectors, and extension cords. And never leave candles unattended. Secure lighters and matches out of reach from children. That's everything for me. Anyone have any questions?
Mahalo, members of the board, members of the public. Are there any questions for HFD at this time? Seeing no hands, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Scott Vier with the Waihaua Police Station. I'm the Night Watch Commander. The Waihaua Station covers the North Shore, Waihaua, and Mililani. I'll go ahead with the stats for the past month. There were four assaults, one robbery, zero burglaries, zero UEMVs or vehicles being broken into. There were 39 motor vehicle collisions, and the total calls for service was 1,052. With that, I'll go into the safety tip for the month. Again, like HFD mentioned, holiday season is soon approaching. I just wanted to go over some safety tips for your home. Oftentimes during the holiday season, you know, people have valuables in their house, gifts, money. Relatives come over, so... First thing is alarms. They're good, but just make sure that it suits your needs. Some of them are so elaborate, sometimes too elaborate, that we know that people don't even set them, or it gets triggered all the time with their pets and curtains. They become desensitized to when it actually triggers. Doors, of course, the more solid the doors with deadbolts, the better. But ultimately, just lock them. You'd be surprised to know how many vehicles get, I mean, homes get broken into and a door was left unlocked. Sliding glass doors or windows, they're on most of our houses. And just know that the sliding windows can be pried and slide open, and that's an easy access point. Many homes, especially here in Milani, has the louvered windows. Those are excellent for ventilation. That's what they were designed for, but they weren't designed for security. So be aware of that. And then a last thing is inventory of property. A lot of us store things in our garage or around our doors, things like weed whackers, generators, your bikes. Note the serial numbers. If not, just take a picture of them. They're handy to have in the unfortunate event that it gets taken. If it's not included in the police report, it's gonna be difficult to get it back to you guys. That's all I have. I'd like to introduce, we have a new commander for the Waihaua Station, Acting Major Kurt Ing. And with me also is Sergeant John Yoshioka hiding back there. Any questions?
No need, hi.
Members of the Board, members of the public, are there any questions for Honolulu Police Department? Yes, ma'am. Please approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and direct your question to us, and HPD will answer your question. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Quigley, and my question is for you guys. We have a, some recent homeless people that hang out. My house is the house right next to the tunnel, and my friends also live near. And these people are constantly, I mean, they set a fire in the tunnel last month. They have, you know, just trash everywhere. Activity with their pets. They have, like, multiple dogs and all kinds of stuff. And I'm just wondering what we can do as community members to bring keep... They have no license plates on their car, first of all. I don't even know how, how is that legal for them to be parked? You know, there's three or four vehicles. None of them have license plates. What do we do? How do we, you know?
Yeah, so we get complaints like these often from all of our districts, but what you can do, we ask that you please call 911 if you see something that looks suspicious or you know it's illegal, especially like the cars that are parked on the street. If it's on one of our city or state streets and there's no license plates, that's enforceable. We can tag them, at least find out who they are. If they're lighting fires, we can address that. So my best thing, my best suggestion would be to call 911, have an officer actually respond and see what you're seeing, and we can take enforcement action.
Excuse me, sorry. We have people attending online, so if you can't hear you, could you speak in the microphone? Thank you. The one issue of hybrid meetings, right? You gotta speak into the mic.
Yeah, we have, we don't actually wanna be present with, you know, being face-to-face with them, because they are intimidated, they do come out of their cars, and, you know, they're...
Understandably, so yeah. If you do not wanna meet with an officer, when you call 911 and you can tell the dispatcher, "I do not wanna meet with them", but you can just kind of watch, see if they show up and, you know? But you don't have to meet with them. If you'd like to, of course, you can request to meet an officer. If, if you see them, yes, if they're, if you know they're doing like something illegal, like lighting fires in the tunnel, if their property is in the roadway in the streets, by all means, call 911. Have the officer respond, responded, and see exactly what you're seeing, and we can address it.
But is it legal to have a car with no license plate?
Not, if it's on a city or state street, it's, then it's illegal. That's enforceable.
So they're there every single night? They're actually there when we left their house today. It'd be just, I mean, every night.
So I'll, actually, I'm on duty tonight. I'll mention it, and we have some officers will check it out tonight.
You know where it's at, right? The five, three, the park?
Yeah.
There's a bathroom there. And there's usually, there's always one vehicle, but sometimes there's three.
Okay.
And then there's like, there's multiple people living.
Okay, so even like that, that's like a process. If there's no plates and the vehicle's abandoned, we can cite it. But for us to actually remove it, there's a process. So we have to cite it, we have to mark it. If it doesn't move, then it becomes old one, and it's like a process. So I just, I'm explaining so you don't think, "Oh, they got there, the cops left, and our person there." It takes a little while.
The cops are there, they're in and out of there. I see always at that site, you know, they're, they're coming and going. But the problem is, the car's always going back there. How with no license plate? I mean, they could be robbing people and all kinds of stuff. I mean, they're, and they have no license plate. So that's frustrating for us as people that live right next to it. Now, now they got them out of the tunnel, MTA did, because my neighbor, who's a retired captain, he went down and was causing all, because he's, we're just sick of it. You know, we both live by the tunnel, and we're, you know, it's a constant nuisance. I know you guys close up the tunnel, we care, so there's no margin. But that tunnel is always a problem.
We're familiar with here. We'll make checks. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that, let me look at some, we have some raised hands online. I see that Board Member Ross has a question.
Aloha, yes. I just wanted to know, when it comes to boats that are parked on the road, what is the process? Do they have to be attached to a vehicle? Or can they be like up on blocks and stuff like that in a trailer? And then, do they have to be moved at any certain time? Only because I'm getting complaints in our neighborhood, because we have a guy who already has a boat there. We think he already follows the rules, but there's now another guy who also has a boat there. And so now it's being questioned on what are the rules? What are the requirements? And what needs to be done?
Okay, so a boat cannot be permanently parked on a city or state street for storage. That's, that's illegal. So if you see one, again, call 911, have the officer go and check it out, and we can take enforcement action. Being, and I could, you guys might know, the, the whole thing about being attached to a trailer, well, I think that's an MTA thing. No? The boat? You gotta speak up.
Please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
That's an MTA thing, right?
Police don't can cite the, the boat or the boat owner if the boat is attached to a truck. The latch is attached to the truck. And that's what people do, and then we just, we don't cite those people. Yeah. But they have to be like latched on.
So if the boat is on, sorry, as a follow-up, if a, because I'm, I'm hearing some commentary on, in the room. If the boat is not attached to a vehicle, standing, or sitting on the roadway, then?
Yeah, we can, I think we can run, the boat has serial numbers, I think, on the boat, correct? I think we can run the boat per dispatch, and we can find who the owner is, and we can cite the, yeah.
You can do a couple of different things. Get the trailer plates, you can find out who owns the trailer. You can run the HA number, which is on, I don't know, one side of the front of the boat. And then you can find out your dealer and our, and through our dispatch. And worse comes to worse. You guys also can call it into abandoned vehicles. When the public calls it into abandoned vehicles, you know, I'm not gonna say they respond better, but it's a little bit more emphasis involved. That's if that thing hasn't been moved in a couple, three days or something like that. Abandoned vehicles, anything over 24 hours. And, you know, you don't go fishing every day, so it'll probably be...
Okay, are there any further questions from Board members or members of the public? Emil, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a follow-up for my question from the last meeting. Have you found out what's the fine for talking to the cellphone while crossing the crosswalk? Hey, y'all.
Thank you.
You know, I don't know the exact fine. I thought it was the, oh, okay. I think it's over 300, but it's under the Hawaii Revised Statutes. You can look up the fines. I don't wanna give you guys wrong information, sorry. I don't, I don't have that.
Okay.
Please, in the microphone.
I mentioned last time, there was a fine. Up the fine, increase the fine, they're gonna do court. There's a court ticket back to a fine. So I believe it's over, like we said, we know the exact one. Over, I think it's over $300, talking itself.
Okay. Any further questions for Honolulu Police Department? Chair has two. Could you provide one update to the Board's request last month as to any increase of enforcement for parking nearby the Mililani Parks? Where we noted crowding at Mililani High School on the back end, as well as Hokoa Hiahi Park, other parks on city surface streets where they're at the turns, you know, during baseball, soccer, football games and such. Has there been increased enforcement for the parking?
There has been increase. And I know the complaint was initially, most of them was like day watch. So we let the day watch sergeant know, they sent officers out there. They were supposed to monitor the area. I believe they were reporting back to their sergeants about making checks and taking whatever enforcement action.
Okay, thank you. If we can increase that as well, I'm still seeing some, you know, especially on the weekends, right? I don't think they're Milani residents, you know, they're kind of coming and going for various competitions for the games. But if we can continue that weekend enforcement nearby parks, I think that that would alleviate and increase a lot of pedestrian safety in those areas. Second question is, could you brief us about the two armed robberies in the area? There was, within the last month, there was one armed robbery in the YPO Gentry area in District 3, where an ATM was stolen from YPO Gentry, but recovered in the Mililani community. And the second armed robbery was within seven days later, same week, where it was up at the Mililani Maoka Recycling Center. Yeah, is there any updates to those?
So for the first robbery, the ATM was taken by the gas station right next to Zippy's. And so I know that's part of you guys did as far as the board, but HPD-wise, that's out of our district. So we don't, we didn't handle the initial taking of the ATM. However, it was recovered shortly after, like you said, in the Launani Valley. The machine was there, I think it was open. We recovered the machine. They ended up recovering the car, the van that was used as well. We called our SIS to process it, to get fingerprints, DNA, what have you. The case is now with our robbery detail, and I don't know any updates as far as if they identified anybody who made an arrest. The second one was, yeah, a gun used for the Reynolds Recycling up in Maoka. Cash was taken. We did the initial report. There was no suspect info at the time, except for his description. And that case is also at our robbery detail with the detectives doing their investigative work. So as far, I mean, I don't think an arrest was made as of yet, but it's with our robbery detail.
There, there are some concerns we've heard from Milani residents where, you know, these are, these are high-profile public concerning armed robberies within the area. We all know that times are getting harder in terms of cost, and the holidays are approaching. So are there any plans for District 2 to increase patrol and enforcement for Mililani Town, especially during the holiday season?
I think we're always trying to increase our patrols and get it up to staffing. We do have some personnel, I mean, some hiring and recruitment issues that we're trying to do, you guys also on the media. So, yeah, it's always, we're always trying to, you only, I mean, put you on the spot. Last night, I went to family night. There was 40 recruits at family night. That's a more than we've had in a considerable amount of time. So as far as staffing goes, you know, it's a trickle-down effect. The more we hire now, you won't see it right away. They have to go to six and a half months of recruit school. The class that's in recruit school now will graduate, and then slowly but surely, the wheels turn, and we will have more staffing. But we are getting that way. The people that are responsible for that in training and human resources, you know, they're doing what they can to get the most qualified people to become police officers. And if you guys look online, honolulupd.org, you guys wanna apply, please do. Thank you.
I believe the testing is here at Milani High School in November, right? Any further questions? Marilyn?
Actually, this is follow-up on, on your first subject matter, which was the parking. And I received a phone call from DTS asking, because I had complained about it, and asking which specific corners in my neighborhood, which is right around the high school. And I did report those, and, and so I did notice that there was less parking on the corners for a couple of football games. So some progress. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you so much for being available to answer all of those. See you next month. Okay. I believe are the representative from US Army Combat Aviation Brigade will not be present today? Rachel? I don't see them online. Okay, so we're gonna move along to Kathleen Pahinui from Board of Water Supply. Come on down.
Aloha, Board members. Let's see. Sorry. Come on. Yeah. Happy to report, no main breaks this past month. And again, our message remains the same, just water conservation, please. Be aware of your water use. I did follow up with Board members Kim and Freed when their questions last month, and provided them with the requested information. And we have our new, brand-new 2026 calendar is coming out. So if you all want copies, let me know, and I can bring them next month. We just got them in today. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Members of the Board, members of the public, are there any questions for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we're gonna go into community concerns. Is there a community member who would like to come forward and express any comment or concern within decorum? Please limit your comments to three minutes each per issue for items not on the agenda. Seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on to presentations. I'd like to recognize Roberta and Bud Jenkins, who are here from the Milani Lions Club, and they're here to present the 38th Annual Milani Holiday Parade, because the holidays are right around the corner, folks.
Absolutely. Good evening. Put one of these at each of your locations, and it'll give you the general information. The wonderful tiny URL will allow you to get all of the maps, the posters, the application, all the information that you need. We also have safety guidelines, and I'm gonna have Bud tell us about how we're going to make sure that the community is aware.
We do our best through digital signs and through banners. We have banners, and a banner in Maoka up by the fire station, and a banner in, in Lower Mililani, near Koahialani, to announce the parade, to make sure people are aware of the parade. I would hate for someone to get up Saturday morning and, "Oh, I have a dentist appointment in 15 minutes", and get stuck in the traffic because of the parade. So we are concerned about that. We have the signs up, and we do our best to make sure people are aware. I think all of the tenants at Town Center and at Mililani Shopping Center have the actual posters that will probably be going up just after Halloween, and, and we'll do our best to get the word out. We've worked very closely with HPD, and as our parade is going through, they'll stop the traffic. The parade goes for a while, especially at the, at the corner of Koahialani and Meheula is, is the biggest tie-up of all. So they'll stop the traffic, and the parade will go through for a while. And then after a few minutes, they stop the parade, and the traffic goes through for a while. So we get, do get some, some flow of traffic there. We don't want it like it was, I don't know, four or five years ago when we backed up onto H2. We don't want that to happen. So hopefully, we have worked closely with HPD to make sure that doesn't happen this time. There will be no parking, signs going up, that little A-frame things going up, announcing the parking all over Mililani Town near the, on the parade route. Please follow those signs. Officers show up about 5:30 in the morning and put the lights on in front of your house, and, and the whoop, whoop with the siren to try to wake you up to, so that they can try to keep from towing your car. So hopefully, people will be able to take care of that so that we don't have an issue with that. Thanks so much. Any questions?
Thank you. So members, this was an informative presentation. We, there is no vote necessary for the parade route. Are there any questions for the Milani Lions? Use razor. Seeing and hearing none. Congratulations on your 38th annual. We'll see you there.
Thank you.
All right, we're making... Well, we'll be in the crowd waving. Thank you, have a good night. Okay, we're making great time, folks, and I wanna recognize our own Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, Sabrina Gustafson. She's gonna present, and we're gonna have some discussion on the City and County of Honolulu's request to all neighborhood, all 33 neighborhood boards, including our own, on the consideration of additional dog-friendly parks, specifically for us in Mililani. Go ahead, Sabrina.
Okay, so I'm gonna preference this with "Don't Shoot the Messenger", like I'm just relaying information, and I'd like to have an amicable discussion about this. So as everybody knows, the City and County Parks Department came to us with a request that we make a recommendation, our Board make a recommendation on making some parks, City and County Parks in our district, dog-friendly. So I put together this little presentation. I sent out a survey. I sent out a survey, Darsha sent out a survey, and the survey data came back that sixty-six percent of the people that took the survey. Now, I not a survey person, not a data gatherer person. I don't know if they were all Mililani residents, but it just shows that sixty-six percent of the people wanted either a dog leashed park or a dog off-leash park. Twenty-seven percent of the population said, no, we don't want a dog anything park in our neighborhood. So that shows that over fifty percent of the population that took the survey want more or the same dog park friendly parks in the area. So next slide, or no, that's stay on that side. So the city and county came to us and said that there are three hundred and eight city and county of Honolulu parks on Oahu. Of the three hundred and eight, thirty-five are dog-friendly on-leash parks and ten are off-leash parks. What's the difference? So an off-leash bark park is a park where you can take your dog, you enter a fenced area and you let the dog off the leash and it runs around like crazy. A leashed park is a city and county park where you see soccer being played, you see baseball, other activities, and you can have your dog on a leash, walking through the park. So a bark park, you only see dogs, no soccer, no baseball, no basketball, no tennis, just dogs. And then a on-leash dog-friendly park is a park where you can see dogs with their families on a leash and other activities. So in our neighborhood Board 25 District, there are fourteen city and county parks. We have zero bark parks and one dog-friendly park, and that's Wayana Park over here next to Wayana School. Uh, next slide. So this is a map, kind of hard to see, but these are the fourteen parks in our neighborhood Board 25 District. The the number corresponds to the actual park name. So that's kind of how it works. So if you can see that. Next slide. So what am I recommending? So the legal standing is, is that if you have your dog in one of these thirteen parks that's not dog-friendly, you can be cited by the police if somebody calls as being illegally in the area with your dog. By not calling the police and reporting these people, we are allowing people to violate the law, break the law, and act improperly in these parks. So my position is that we should allow more parks to have dog-friendly capabilities for the people that are taking their dogs to soccer games, baseball games, that kind of thing. Or that have the opportunity to take their park, their dogs to a park closer to their home to exercise them, to work with them, to have them bond closer. So I'm not recommending bark parks. It's very clear. I don't want any more bark parks. I want current parks in our neighborhood. So of those fourteen, thirteen of them, some of them, one of them, at least one, I would prefer, to be dog-friendly for dogs on leash. That means that you can go with your dog on a leash and access the park, go into the park and sit there and watch a game or walk through the park with your dog, something like that. Um, we were, this is the only statistic I could find. Neighborhood Board 27, which was the North Shore area, they have seventeen parks, like city and county parks in their district. They made ten of the seventeen dog-friendly on-leash parks. So that's quite a bit. And then my recommendation, kind of where I see us coming to a meeting of the minds, is if we look at the parks in our neighborhood and we eliminate the ones with dedicated facilities like baseball diamonds and tennis courts, where there could be a conflict of people with their dogs and children. Go to the next slide. It leaves us with this short list of parks that I would recommend. The current dog-friendly park is Wayana, which is kind of up to the top of the district. So I would recommend one just to kind of keep things even in the lower part of the district. So I'm recommending Park Nine, Eleven, or Twelve, which if you want to scroll down, go no, 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 a little bit more, right there. So eleven, twelve, and nine. Nine is over by Safeway. That used to be the old Red Ropes Park. Eleven is like down across from the what used to be the multicolored patio homes. And then twelve is over next to old, or the old preschool Rec Four. So those would be the three that I would recommend, one of those three we pick. So I'm making a motion that the board recommend at least one a park in our district to be on-leash dog-friendly. I'm open to questions or discussion.
I have a clarifying question to your motion. You're making a motion for the board to adopt at least one.
To recommend at least one.
Recommend, but you're not stating which.
I don't want which one, yeah.
Okay.
I would like us to come to an agreement and recommend at least one additional park in our district to become dog-friendly on leash. I'd love more, but I want to recommend at least one.
All right. There is a motion for us. Is there a second to the motion? For before we enter discussion, we need to have a second. Is there a second? Seconded by Ed. Okay, discussion to the motion. Mary.
Okay, I'm speaking in opposition to that. It's my understanding that there is one park over in Mililani Town that's already dog-friendly.
Correct. There is one of fourteen.
And what I see is all of them are used for children's sports. And as I I walk around the neighborhood every morning, six days a week, and I'm seeing that pets are, you know, are relieving themselves and leaving some of its owners are not picking up after them. And so I don't think that's healthy for our parks that are used so heavily for sport. I noticed a park that's near me, we go by and occasionally there's someone with a dog at the park, even though it's not allowed. So as we've said before, you can walk through the park and I think that's enough. One dog-friendly park on every side of the freeway, I think, is adequate. Thank you.
So Mary, when you see the dogs walking through the park illegally, do you call the police?
No, I don't.
So you allow them to break the law?
I do.
Okay.
Further discussion. I see that Emile has his hand up, followed by Elise online. So go ahead, Emile.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, would there be any cost associated with this? Are they going to change the signs, you know, those blue signs at those parks if the dog-friendly park is allowed? That's all I yield.
Good question. There was no specific information as to cost provided by the Department of Parks and Recreation. However, this is an initiative that they're leading, that they would they are recommending some dog-friendly parks across the island of Oahu, and they're reaching out to all neighborhood boards as community recommendations. So these costs are not imposed on us as neighborhood board. I believe that that cost is already being considered by the City and County of Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation. However, that cost was not disclosed to our board.
And my understanding was Neighborhood Board 27 that made those recommendations tried to put our limits on it, like dogs only allowed between five and eight or something like that. And they came back and said that they'd have to investigate the signage, but if it's just removing no off-leash, that that's easier for them to do on the signs that are there currently.
Okay.
Good.
Elise, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, Sabrina, when you say dog-friendly, you mean you can go there with your dog as long as the dog is on a leash?
Correct.
Okay.
You can be in the confines of the park with your dog on a leash and not be in violation of the law.
So if somebody wants to go to the district park and watch a game, they can't bring their dog.
Currently, they would be in violation of the law if they brought their dog there, yes.
Right, currently, but even, but you're not recommending that the district park be a dog-friendly park.
I felt based on the feedback I received previously, that District Park was a big ask, that that's gonna get a lot of resistance because the park is so actively used by children, baseball, skaters, that kind of thing, basketball, tennis, that that was a park not to try to go for this park. I'd like to see all the parks in Milani be dog-friendly, but that's too big of an ask. So.
That's not your motion.
That's not my motion.
Exactly.
I think we could ask for more than just those three. And even of those three, I'm not familiar with the one by Rec Four, but the other two that you were recommending, yeah, somebody else mentioned, they're, they are both heavily used for sports. A lot of soccer and that sort of thing. At different times of year, you've got the Tai Chi, you've got all kinds of stuff going on in those parks. So it's not like they're not used in the same way as the other parks are. So I don't know. I think we could go in and ask for more, more than those three. If you don't want to go with the district park, okay, that's kind of a shame. But I think we should ask for more.
So did.
And my understanding is, is we can make a recommendation at any point in the time and like this is not a closed door. We make a recommendation now. If feedback is good, then we can make a recommendation next year or whenever that we'd like additional parks opened up.
I see. Okay, next we have, oh, Marilyn has her hand up. Actually, sorry, Marilyn, I'm going to recognize Karumi, she had her hand up online, and then we'll go to you, Marilyn.
Go ahead, Karumi.
So I'd like to preface this with saying that I am a dog lover and I myself own four dogs and I also walk my dogs. But I do notice that the Michael Nakamuta Park, which is right next to the Y W, YMCA, is a high-traffic sports park. And I frequent that park a lot because a number of my grandchildren play sports there. And I do see constantly walkers with dogs not picking up after their pets. And so I'm going to have to agree with Mary on that matter that there are people who are very inconsiderate. And then who suffers are the kids who are playing on the field. And there's really no one who goes and picks up after these abusers. So it becomes very problematic. And I'm going to answer your question that you posed to Mary and say, have I ever called the police when I saw people just totally disregarding the courtesy rule of picking up after the dogs? And I will say yes. But when the police come, it's basically too late because it's almost like the fireworks situation. They have to see the dog and the owner there. And by then, by the time they get there, they're on their merry way. So it really doesn't work. So I feel that if we do consider opening up a number of our parks, especially the high-traffic sports parks, we're going to run into a bigger problem of people who now are legitimately able to walk their dogs through the park and making a mess.
Thank you. I would just like to point out that if we keep the status quo, we can't expect things to change. If we open the parks up to dog-friendly dog owners, there's a possibility that you'll see the amount of poop being reduced because those dog owners are responsible and they'll pick up after other people. Dog owners tend to be real responsible if they are the proper dog owners. And those that are accessing the park for activities with their dogs are normally very responsible dog owners. They're not just taking it on a walk. So by allowing them into the park, we might see the number of incidences reduce because other people will be there to pick up after them.
Okay, I see some hands. We're going to go with Marilyn, then Josie, then Ed, and then Martina.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have a simple, a similar concern as Mary related to children. It's a little different from her concern, but if if you have dog-friendly parks and the dogs have to be leashed, I'm afraid that sometimes I see really young children walking dogs. And that is really dangerous because they don't have the control over a dog and they may get into an altercation with another dog. And there may be injury both to the child and to the dogs. So I assume that one needs to be an adult to walk a dog. Or if not, then is there an age where children are allowed to walk dogs in these parks?
There is no legal age requirement for walking a dog or allowing a child access to a park. That's a parenting issue.
Okay. All right, we got a lot of questions. This is great discussion, folks. Josie, followed by Ed.
Hi. We have Wayana as a leashed park and we have Malka as a unleashed. And I've had, I have three kids. My kids have played in every single park in Mililani Sports. All of them. We constantly would have problems. So parents, like I, we'd have to come early to pick up the poop before the game so the kids wouldn't land in the poop. I also have two dogs and people come even in front of my house and let their dogs relieve and leave the mess. We had this problem all over Mililani. There was an incident where the guy, an adult, was walking his dog. He couldn't handle his dog. He fell, the dog ran. My son, out of the kindness of his heart, grabbed the leash for the guy, brought the dog to the wife. She wouldn't grab the dog and the dog turned around and bit my son's hand. I have graphic pictures. He ended up in the emergency room. Fire department came. It was so bad. His senior year, he could no longer play soccer, track, or paddling on his senior year because so he will not ever touch another dog. And yes, we have dogs. So I wish people would be responsible. I've responded, may I have responded where in Malka, they would just leave the dogs there and the dogs would have to be turned in. And I wish and people would be responsible, bring their dogs. I'd be all for it. And for those reasons, I'm not. Thank you.
I would just like to point out that the Bark Park is not part of our district. So although it's close, it's not in our district.
Noted. Ed?
I understand and I hear what everybody's saying about the poop problem. But in my area, yeah, there is a poop problem. I do understand that, you know, we're going to have to have some behavioral changes and it takes time. And one suggestion that I would look at is if they could work with Mililani Town Association or, you know, put that poop receptacle with bags for them to, you know, that it's there for them. Because when I walk by, when I'm walking my dog up the street, it's full. So I think we're going to have to do some cognitive changes for these people. But thank you for all your research.
Okay, Martina, and then I see Anne Freed has her hand up online.
Yeah, my discussion was along the line, the same lines as Ed's. If we allow parks, dog on-leash parks, I would hope that Mililani Town would provide bags and receptacles, but as at the same time, I would kind of expect the county to have trash pickup in that location to give the owners the opportunity to clean up after their dogs. And I personally would hope that we would vote to recommend more than one park for dogs on leash because just having one in our district, I believe, is yeah, is a little off, but that's just me. Call me naive.
Yes, and the city and county parks do have trash cans there that dogs could put, well, people could put the dog poop in. The bags is something that MTA provides on the corners and they're welcome to take them if they need them. I don't know about the coordination between putting those at the city and county parks. I don't know if MTA would be amicable to that. But it's definitely something we can discuss if more parks are open.
I'd like to jump in on this. In conversation with DPR, when they requested this to our board, I did ask that same question about poop bags. And the response I received from, and it could, this was back in April when they requested us to take this up. So back in April, the response was that this, the staff person who is organizing this program is looking into possibly providing and working through their own city channels and their city leadership to figure out whether there's financing to provide, you know, a poop station. If the board and DPR concurs of trends, transitioning one of our parks to be more dog-friendly. I can, what I can do is I can also follow up with that, with that city employee to figure out whether there's been any development to that conversation that, you know, it was a frank question I just had in April. So I would be happy to follow up on that with the city. Um, so that we can come back around and address the poop bag questions. I see Anne has her hand up. So Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, as a non-dog owner, I'm just not going to weigh in on this, but Sabrina, thank you again. That was pretty thorough research. It took a lot of work and you deserve a lot of credit for that. And but there are a couple of things that maybe we might add as an amendment, so suggestion, or either down the road in one or either down the road. And one is that we, if the city wants, a recommendation is that we have a park, whatever, is that we also recommend that they have a, a certain amount placed bags in the park. And the other thing is, I think, coordination with enforcement. Now, my condominium community is dog-friendly. And our neighbors, we watch if they are violating our leash law or not picking up their poop. We call security and they get a fine. So this is a matter of enforcement. And so I would also recommend that HBD, that there be some sort of regular patrol, you know, stationed at certain intervals or whatever. Doesn't have to be every day, but at some point in time. So that, you know, if people get caught, when people start getting caught and they start getting fines, then the behavior will change. The other point that was well-taken is that people who are, who go to these parks with dogs on leashes tend to be more responsible owners and may also call the police when they see such a violation. So I mean, I'm probably gonna vote in favor of this resolution, but again, that's, that's all I have on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Anne. I, yeah, I 100% agree that, you know, it's an enforcement issue for me. If we're allowing this to keep happening and we're just saying we're gonna be okay with these people breaking the law, then how can we expect them to pick up their poop? If we hold them responsible and say, this is not a park you can be at, take your dog to this other park, take your dog to this other area, this is for children only. That's much more powerful for them than saying, well, I have no other options. I can't go anywhere else. So I'm gonna do what I wanna do here. So I do think it's a matter of community enforcement. If we can get people to call in the dangerous dogs, call in the dogs that are unruly in the neighborhood, using the park frequently and not picking up their poop, you know, that's, that's one way that we can help. We're penalizing the majority for the few that continue to break the law and continue to be disruptive.
So just jump in quickly, but that means HPD has to step up.
Correct, yes. And they have to think it's a priority, too.
Okay, I see Mary wants to have a second round of speaking. I understand that passion. I wanna get through all of our board members, since we're getting some really good discussion here. I see that, sorry, member Ross, you have, you're having.
Yes, so I hear a lot is going on. And I understand that when it comes down to the end, whether we make a park, a dog park, leash-friendly or not, it's not gonna stop the bad people. It's not gonna fix the issue of any. Regarding the MTA bags and MTA trash cans, all you gotta do is at any time, if you are out of bags or if the trash can is full, you call MTA and within less than an hour, Monday through Friday, they come immediately to pick it up. I've seen this multiple times because I do my walks around Safeway and right across the street from Safeway, which is very close to certain parks, as we all know, they consistently pick it up. Monday mornings is their worst days. I get it, they don't do it over the weekends, but it's very simple to do. And I have, I don't, and I know that we have people who are on the board right now that can easily take this information directly parked to MTA. We can make this whole big thing about, hey, we no longer have one city park, now we have two city parks. This is where you need to go. This is where you can have your dogs. This is where you're gonna be able to spend time with your dogs. All those other parks are still off limits. If you want them to be coming on limits, come to the neighborhood board, talk to us and tell us your story. Because then you'll have dog people coming out to either neighborhood board or MTA to push this agenda rather than Sabrina or a few other people on the board. So I'm happy with all the discussion and I'm happy that we can do this. But I also feel that on the neighborhood board, we shouldn't be the one pushing this. They should be coming ready from the. And I understand that right now it's almost eight o'clock and we still got a full agenda to do. So I think this has been a great discussion and I think we should, I'm requesting to move on from discussion and choose either nine to 11, whichever one that's gonna be, vote on it and continue moving forward because we're running out of time for this.
Okay. It's, that's a very good point. It's 7:55. We started this discussion at 7:28. That's about 30 minutes of conversation about dog parks in Mililani, a lot of passion about poop bags. And so I wanna thank you all for having this discussion. We needed to have it so that we could provide follow-up to the City Department of Parks and Recreation. Sabrina, if it is all right with you, I appreciate your motion. There were some motions, or some, or I don't know if they're formal amendments, but ideas of even broadening that. There were ideas of limiting that. So given that, what I would like to do is bring this motion and/or resolution to the November meeting for a vote. So that our members can talk to their neighborhoods. They can talk to, you know, they can go to parks, they can talk to people. Heck, they can share the survey that you and Darsha put together and led so that we can even widen the net. If there are certain parks that are just a complete no-go, please let Sabrina know. If, if it's burning in, in your heart that it just can't be Mililani District Park, let her know. I think that what's been a challenge, and I really applaud Sabrina for this, is essentially the city and county want, is, is launching this initiative. And I appreciate them in a democratic way coming to our community neighborhood board so that we can have this open, transparent conversation. And it seems like we need to have that conversation just a little longer and we can provide a recommendation in November. Would you be open to withdrawing your motion, Sabrina?
I have no problem withdrawing my motion. My fear is, is that this was an ask by the City and County Parks Department to try and gain some community engagement. It wasn't a, give us your answer and we'll do what you want. And there could be a possibility that they say, you guys aren't being very amicable this, we're just gonna change the parks all over. So I think we're missing the opportunity to provide feedback if we allow it to go past the December deadline that they gave us. And with us recessing in December, I would at least like the motion to stand that we agree we can recommend one park and then come to November and say, which park are we gonna recommend?
Okay, and, okay, okay. Very good point taken. And if there are members of the board who would like to propose amendments to your one park, or they wanna specify the park, or they wanna expand the one park to three parks and name those parks, and if they wanna limit your one park to zero parks, they can propose those amendments. There will be a lot of voting in November then. I, I just wanna point that out. Okay, and to your point Sabrina, that is a very good point on the City and County of Honolulu. They can completely decide on their own, they're well within their powers and rights as the landowner of the parks, right? It's a courtesy that they're asking our board to provide recommendations. So you yield your motion for tonight?
I'll yield it for tonight if we can kind of tentatively agree that we'll have a decision in November some way. Either no, we're not gonna recommend any, or we can recommend one and this is our one.
So would you propose a motion to postpone this motion for the November agenda?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that? Second, any discussion? None. Any opposed? None. Any omissions? Abstentions? None. Okay, it's gonna be on the November agenda. Thank you Sabrina. And I just wanna give you that recognition. Can we all give her a round of applause? Oh, there was an abstain? Two abstentions from Marilyn. Thank you, sorry, sorry about that. Okay, next up, we're gonna do meeting minutes. Back to Sabrina for our secretary for a motion to approve the minutes.
The minutes for the Wednesday, September 24th meeting went out. I did have a concern regarding one item. Is Darsha online? No, okay. I don't think I can move to approve them yet because on her report, she stated that the Rec Center 3 concerns and she went up, talked about vandalism at the park. And I don't think it was Rec Center 3. I think it was the Mililani Neighborhood Park. So I think that needs to be corrected by her. I, I watched the video and the video does say Rec Center 3. So if that's a wrong report, can we approve the minutes? Because it was, it's technically right. That's what she said. But I don't think that was the right park. Okay. Does anybody know? Because Rec Center 3 is private property, so I don't think it was Rec Center 3. I think it was the Mililani Park, which is what those ladies at the beginning of the meeting were talking about as well, I believe.
But I believe you can correct after the fact. Right, Rachel, if we find out something different later.
I know for me, like sometimes like I counted wrong for the members, so then I, I do correct that. In case we want to have both information, it can be like, she said this, but actually it meant to be this instead. Put like a little note.
Okay, so then I'm going to move to approve the minutes with a follow-up to Darsha on a correction of the area that she was concerned about. And we'll put a note saying what specific area it was in.
Okay, Rachel?
Is there anybody opposed to that recommendation? Any abstains? Okay, so we'll approve the minutes with a little note about that. Thank you.
So approved. Okay, next up, reports of chairs and board committees. For chairs' report, members, I mentioned last month that there was, I did end up providing a letter to DPP transmitting our position on Mount Ka'ala. They did contact the Neighborhood Commission Office for all the boards who have adopted a resolution on Mount Ka'ala. Since there is a new minor modification permit to that project. And so I provided a transmittal letter summarizing the board's concerns, summarizing our joint board meeting as well as transmitting the attachment of our resolution that we adopted earlier in the year. That deadline to DPP is tomorrow, so I did send that along. That completes my report. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. Going to community partnerships and community outreach, Kate.
Nothing to report, Chair, although the presentation or the survey about the dog park, we might wanna think about sharing that on the Instagram. I had, I have a momentary lapse in memory. The person who presented that presentation, could you get in touch with me so we can talk about maybe sharing that survey on the Instagram? Thank you.
All right, next up, community recognition and service awards, Josie. Any report?
Sorry, I didn't have a mic. No, I have no report. Thank you.
Okay, next up, community maintenance and walkout audit, co-chairs Ken Anoy and Skylar Ross. Any, any report?
I think you report.
Okay. Friendly reminder to members and members of the public, members of the board, members of the public, please use, as you walk around the Mililani community, please use the Google form so that this committee can transmit any issues that you see, whether they're sidewalk cracks, et cetera, while you traverse the Mililani area so that we can efficiently and formally liaise this information to the city, state, and MTA, or federal governments. Okay, Trevor, for planning zoning and sustainable development.
Yep, so just briefly, as you're probably aware, the extension of Skyline to Kalahi Transit Center and the airport opened last week, Thursday, October 16th. So I've taken a few rides on it in that time and it is indeed very nice and ridership is up significantly. So I believe before the extension, ridership, typical daily ridership is in the ballpark of like 3,000 to 4,000 people per weekday. And now the ridership counts are above 10,000. Even though, and this is like aside from this past weekend, which was fare-free. But even on the days where people are, do have to pay a fare, which would have been Thursday, Friday, and then Monday through today. It, so it is being used and it's being used pretty substantially right now. So again, I look forward to seeing it continue into Kaka'ako and, and, yeah, so speaking of a shuttle, so another thing that changed was that the 51 was rerouted to stop in front of Wa'ava Transit, the Wa'ava Station. So that's where the Pearl Highlands parking structure is. So that is like a nice step forward, even though there's no parking for the foreseeable future. And another thing that the city is looking at is that they're looking at rerouting the E, which right now runs from Ever Beach into Waikiki. So instead, it would run from Ever Beach up to Wahiwah via the Mililani Maoka Park and Ride. I don't think the city has a timeline for that yet, but again, that would also be helpful in, you know, providing access to Skyline from here. So other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Trevor and his committee report? I see Emile has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Trevor. Can you tell us what's the source of the information that there is 10,000 riders?
That was the official ridership number from DTS. I can try see if they put it out in a press release. I did see that a number in that ballpark was published by Hawaii News Now. So once I find it, I can drop a link in the chat for you.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any further questions for Trevor members? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Next up, Ed Flores, Transportation and Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Just real quickly here, just Mililani residents who use Cam Highway, just be aware that there's gonna be contra-flow on Kamia Mea Highway. Mililani and, Mililani students and Pearl City students will be painting a mural in celebration of the Oahu of Waipio. So be careful, there's gonna be contra-flow, so you might wanna try to avoid that area.
Members, are there any questions for Ed? Mary?
What are those dates?
Dates for the,
For the contra-flow?
Dates for the contra-flow?
25th, 25th and 26th.
Of October. Further questions to Ed? And his committee chair report? And Dennis is traveling, Darsha is not online. Okay, Sabrina, Parks and Rec, you have a report?
No further report.
She's working hard, folks. Okay, last but not least, Marilyn, Education Report.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I can hear myself now. I'm gonna, I just wanna mention a few things about the library because the library has a lot to do with education. And strangely enough, this morning, the advertiser editorial was about how the rates of literacy have gone down over the whole United States. And Hawaii still has a pretty good rate of literacy, but it could be a lot better, 17% of people who don't or are not literate. But the library is doing a really good job. And this year they had a great summer reading program. And the child from Mililani did win the Oahu Prize, so we can be proud of that. Other things about happening at the library is that they now have a new adult library technician in addition to a life, adult librarian, which is a very helpful thing if you're looking for the kind of books that adults might be needing. And we have also started to have a, a new security guard company guarding the library. And our new guard is Travis Booker and he goes by Booker and he's a Mililani resident. And October 13th is the first, or was the first day of Mililani. of Mililani having a digital navigator who's available to help patrons with their technology questions. They accept appointments and can help with walk-ups as well. They're here Mondays, two to six and Thursdays, nine to twelve. And I think that's sort of an amazing thing. The last thing I wanted to mention was that Mililani Public Library is now going to start up a book club and this is for adults and it's going to meet uh for the first time on Monday, November third, five thirty PM to six thirty PM. And they are going to be reading the highly acclaimed novel, the retelling of the classic, The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, told through the eyes of the escaped slave Jim. So that should be very interesting and increase the literacy of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Members of the board, are there any questions for Marilyn in her committee chair report? Seeing and hearing none. That completes the reports of chairs and board committees. We're going to go into elected official reports. I don't see Nester online for Congressman Case, but Tony's here in person for Governor Green. Come on down.
Good evening. I'm going to start off with, I just have one thing to mention today. Um, it's been a busy time for the crews over at the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. Uh, lots of affordable housing is being built right now, either has been completed or is underway. Um, following the grand opening of the all-new, all-affordable, three hundred and two-unit Na'ulu rental housing complex in Halava across from Pearl Harbor. HHFDC's various partners are advancing affordable housing projects on Maui, Hawaii Island and on Kauai. Na'ulu, formerly known as Halava View Two, is located across from the Pearl Harbor Naval Shipyard, only a short walking distance from the Halava Skyline Rail Station. Depending on the unit availability, households qualify if they earn no more than thirty to sixty percent of the area median income for the Honolulu region, as determined by the US Office of Housing and Urban Development. Um, Na'ulu is twenty-five stories tall and its units range in size from studios to four-bedroom units. I looked it up and the rent ranges from six hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month to two thousand four hundred and two, depending on the size of the unit. Uh, the hundred and sixty-eight million dollar project is the largest low-income housing tax credit development in Hawaii in the last fifteen years. And there's at least three other projects that are already accepting tenants on the neighbor islands. There's one in Hilo, um, one in the Haina Maui, and there are two underway actually on Kauai. Um, the nonprofit EAH Housing is the property manager for the rental units. And to learn more, I gave a link to Rachel, who's going to put it in the, the chat, in the comments online, but uh, it's a little bit of a mouthful. It's eaehousing.org/apartment/lima-ola. Um, that's what I have.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions to the governor's office? Please raise your hand. Sir, please approach the microphone, state your name for the record and address your question to uh our, our board and the governor's office will provide an answer.
Hi, my name is James and I just wanted to ask about the, with the federal government shutting down, the SNAP program gets their funding from the federal government. How's the state going to be handling that? Is they not going to be providing the funds for thousands of people across the whole state to be able to eat? Or I know there's many states across the country that have already publicly said if the government doesn't open, there's no money there. I haven't heard anything from state officials here, so what's going on?
I'm glad you asked about that. The governor is very much aware of this um issue involving the government shutdown. Right now, um, even not just the shutdown, but other federal actions that have been underway uh for quite a few months now have also caused some concern for programs like SNAP. But here, um, right now, it's fully funded as of uh this fiscal year. They'll have to go back to the table and look at the next fiscal year, but for now, it's, it's sound. As far as the shutdown goes, um, that's kind of a watch and wait and see. I can ask the Department of Human Services to look in on it, but from what I can tell, they, they're, they're watching and monitoring right now. But for now, uh, the fund is sound for people in Hawaii.
Thank you. I see that there's a hand raised online from member Ross. Go ahead.
Hi, um, now that Kamia Ha'ameha Highway in front of Samskow has this beautiful new U-turn that the state just installed, I was wondering, does this mean that the off-ramp coming off of H1 going to H2 westbound is going to be open now? Or is that still something that you guys are working with DTS? So DOT and DTS are still working out the transition to opening that area?
I think it cut out a little, but I think I heard you ask about the H1, H2 off-ramp.
Yes, on the H, so on H1 westbound, when you take the H2 off-ramp, if you're in the far right-hand side, there's a road that cuts off that's currently being blocked.
Yeah.
And it would spin around to get you going back eastbound on Kamia Ha'ameha, right in front of Samskow. Right there, the city and county and I think Hawaii DOT just installed a U-turn uh that goes under the skyline directly across from Samskow. My question, but it's still blocked off. I was just wondering if you had any updates of when it's going to be open or if that city and county that's going to be working together with you guys to open it up.
Okay. I'll try to get an answer for the next meeting.
Thank you, Tony. I see that Anne Freed has her hand up. Go ahead, Anne.
So I know I have to form this in the, in the, in a question, so I'll say, are you aware that on next Tuesday, the Senate Committee on Health and Human Services is holding a hearing on this very subject? They're asking for reports from the Department of Human Services, Department of Health and the Hawaii Food Bank. It's in Zoom online. So you, you'd be able to find the, uh, and I'll try to post it in chat, but you should be able to find it on the Capitol website. So if you want to know what's going on, that's a good place to find out. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Yes, Rudy, go ahead.
Uh, yes, so the people affected by the furlough, is there any talks about assistance for rent, car payments, you know, water or any of those type of things? Cause a lot of those people are not going to have money in pocket until the furlough ends.
Uh, I don't know the answer at this time, but I will ask.
Tony, um, question about unemployment insurance. There was some messaging in the news about those furloughed, the civilian employees, uh, federal civilian employees who were furloughed are able to request for state unemployment insurance provided by DLIR um, for the duration that they're not paid uh by the federal government. When I last checked from uh with the state, I believe it was a Friday ago, there was enrollment of two hundred fifty federal civilian personnel. Has that number increased?
When was that? You saw that number?
Uh, last week. And is the state informing federal civilian employees that this unemployment insurance is available? Although they have to do, they have to repay it later when they get paid. Is that being communicated?
I will check.
Are there any further questions for governor's representative? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Tony. Okay, next up, we got our mayor's representative, Jocelyn Doan. Welcome.
Aloha, everybody. Happy Wednesday. Mahalo again for having me. Um, I just wanted to share uh three quick things from the mayor's highlights of the month before I respond to some of the um questions that were asked the last time. Um, most of you are aware that the city had the honor of hosting a farewell to Fiji concert last month, which was the largest event ever staged at a city facility, in this case, um, the Waikiki Show, which I have the honor of helping to um oversee on behalf of the city and Ko'opilani Park. Um, you know, I think the city was super stoked and proud to play, um, you know, a small role in recognizing Fiji, who's, you know, inspired and generation of artists. Um, and we were also glad to report that there weren't any major issues um at the event. You know, there were lots of concerns about that. Um, I, I also wanted to share, the Honolulu Charter Commission has been actively seeking input from the community on amendments to the city's charter, which is our governing document. Some refer to it as the city's constitution. Um, they have already hosted eight informational sessions uh different places across the Aina, uh Pae Aina and have one final meeting this evening, which was online. Uh, you can still submit proposals um until November seventh. I'm happy to put the link in the chat when I'm done. Um, and then finally, the new city Honolulu Ocean Safety Commission held their first meeting last month. They have, you know, lots of responsibilities, including in particular appointment of a new permanent chief of the department. Um, applications are being accepted now, so if anyone knows anybody that might be interested, please let them know. Um, this, it's been discussed a lot in the meeting already and we kind of brought it up last meeting. But of course, everyone knows that segment two of Skyline opened this past weekend. I copied and pasted the text from the um press release that was issued um with the figures. It was uh twenty thousand people rode Skyline on Sunday, which is amazing. Um, and then I just wanted to report back on some concerns and requests that were submitted my way um at the last meeting and since the last meeting. So, you know, I wasn't able to report this last month, but it looks like it was done right after our meeting. Um, the sidewalk construction at Kamayo Park was actually a Hiko project and when we went to go, when DFM went to go check it out in early October, it was finished and open. Um, I know member Freed um provided a TMK for uh her question about um a condo's pipe replacement project. Um, the TMK we got, we're assuming is not correct, but we think we found the apartment and the multiple application plans. Um, it's currently in a review and the first plan review cycle for an application like this usually takes about a hundred and twenty days. So that's the um response from DPP on that. Um, DPP's also removed the wood pieces that was meant to deter illegal dumping, I'm sorry, DPR parks. Um, that was meant to deter illegal dumping at Ko'opilani Neighborhood Park. I think I got some photos. There was some weird wood pieces that were, you know, they were trying to prevent dumping, but it just made it worse. So that was removed um since our last meeting. Um, I, I, I'm not sure of HPD. I was trying to pay attention to what HPD was saying earlier and I think um Chair Bass, you might have asked about this, but I know member Lee had requested assistance with illegal parking around Mililani High School on Sundays. Um, I know Lieutenant Oliver had tried to call you, Miss Lee, um, but they were checking. Um, the last time they checked was October twelfth, then there were no parking issues at that time. But it looks like they're going to continue to try to pay more close attention to that area um more regularly on the weekend. And then Chair Bass had requested that we look into this um speeding uh on Ko'opilani Ave near Kipapa Drive intersection. And so the um study has been ordered by DTS. Um, this will include a site inspection, a speed survey and a review of the area's traffic collision history. So the hope is to get that finished by the end of December. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Aloha, New Yee.
Members of the board, members of the public, are there any question, questions for the mayor's representative? Anne, go ahead.
Thank you very much for that information. Yeah, we, I didn't know that that had been dumped. That's, that's encouraging. Um, okay, so I, I apologize that, you know, this is me not being as informed as I would like. But those hearings on the revision of the neighborhood plan, I thought I was going to run on Zoom. They're not on Zoom, are they? They're in person. Is that correct?
I didn't say anything about neighborhood plans. I was talking about the Charter Commission. Are you referring to a specific?
The Charter, yeah, I'm sorry, the Charter Commission, yeah.
Oh, 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 so they, they had meetings in person and they had a final meeting tonight, which was online, but it happens to be the same time as this meeting, unfortunately.
All right, well, I just want to say I have a concern and if so, if you could find this out, the last time we went through this and and this is why people with gray hair and who've been here a long time are useful. There was an attempt largely led by developers to eliminate the neighborhood boards. So I guess I would like to know if that kind of thing is going on again. That's all. That's my question.
So at this point, I don't know that any of the proposals are public. I think they're still accepting um proposals until November seventh. Um, and then there's like a vetting process for the proposals that they're going to consider. I'm happy to get more information about like the process um so that we'll know when the proposals that they receive will be like evaluated by the commission. Um, so at this point, you know, I, I don't know what's been submitted, but you know, happy to.
And if there, if there are proposals like that that are unacceptable to the community, if there's a process to address that publicly.
So the commission itself does have their meetings, which are sunshine meetings. Um, I'm pretty sure it is available online as well. The, my reference to the meetings that were in person were, they were going out into the community and doing like, you know, outreach. But their meetings are generally accessible. Does that make sense? They're like regular meetings where they're going to make decisions and stuff.
Yeah, okay. And, and you know, if we, if, if you could keep us informed on that, that would be great. I, they tend to, that, these things tend to fly under the radar until they're OBE.
And then it's too late. Link and stuff too, and I'll, I'll put it in the chat so that you know how to sign up for the meeting notices too.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Sir, uh, please introduce yourself for the record and um address your question to the board and the mayor's representative will provide an answer.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Scott Smart from Mililani. Uh, my question for the mayor's rep has to do with car registration. My car registration was due this month and reporting in the press stated that mail-in registrations were not being processed. The city and county was unable to account for checks that are being received by mail. And when they were asked about this in the press, the response is, well, you can use the kiosk, which of course is nice, but you charge a convenience fee for the kiosk. So I went down to Kapalama to pay in person because trying to do something at Wahihua is kind of impossible. That place is a zoo. And I, and the people down at Kapalama were helpful. I got registered, but I don't think you should have to do that just to get registered. So the question or issue is what is the city and county doing to resolve these recurring problems with uh handling car registrations? And I yield, thank you, Chair.
Um, so I am not aware of problems with car registration. Uh, I actually, it's so, I almost feel like you were listening to my conversation today because I was just telling my boss that I literally sent a check-in for my car registration two days ago because I refused to pay the fee at the kiosk also. Um, I know on my car registration notice, which I just looked at yesterday, they're recommending that you send it in two weeks in advance um to make sure that they have uh, you know, sufficient time to process it. I am unaware of any problems related to lost checks. Um, so I'm happy to ask if there are, have been problems, but I'm, I've never heard of there being an issue. So I don't know if that was something that was reported in the news or.
Board member Smart, is there an, you would like to elaborate on this issue?
Uh, I would.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I can explain that a neighbor sent her registration in in the mail and she waited well over a month to get her registration. And she just recently, maybe today or yesterday, decided to go up to Wahihua and wait in line to get it done. But it was over a month she waited and that's really not satisfactory.
Sure, okay. I will report on that delayed time that it's taking for folks to get their registration back when they mail it in.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I see online we have another question from board member Karumi. Go ahead.
Hi, I was wondering if the city still has the, I guess it's the, it's a program that allows for a person to report an abandoned vehicle and then they come and tow it away for free.
I am not aware of that. I will find out about that. I think the HPD officer earlier had mentioned a particular number as well or, or line as well, so I'll, I'll check on that. I am unaware of that, but I will check.
I think in the past, the city had negotiated with certain tow truck companies and they would pay them a, a fee to go about picking up abandoned vehicles and then hauling them off to a certain entity. So it was something that the city used to do, but I don't know if they still have that in effect. So if you could, if you could follow us on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Also, I'm hearing that board member Ka'anahe might have some answers to that. So she may drop that into the chat.
You have to report it to the Honolulu abandoned vehicle. They will come out and cite it. If it's not moved within so many hours, then they will tow it. You just can't have the vehicle towed. You have to report it to the online abandoned vehicle. It's very simple form to fill out. You search, what did you search? Honolulu abandoned vehicles? City and County of Honolulu abandoned vehicles, and it's the first website that pops up, and then you report the form.
Thank you for reemphasizing with the sergeant clarified. Yes. Okay. Are there any other questions for the mayor's representative? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much, Jocelyn.
Can I say one last thing, Chair? I'm just going to put in the link. Apparently, they regularly update a Google Drive with the different charter amendment proposals. I didn't know that, so I was Googling it while we're talking, and so I just put in the link. But I'll also find the link to sign up for the meetings too.
And sorry, before we move on, I would like to thank you for looking into the Kipapa Elementary School's request. They did a, they provided a formal request to myself, to the board, as well as Senator De La Cruz's office regarding the need for speed tables and pedestrian lighting on Kuaheleani Avenue nearby the crosswalk. That's a frustrating issue that they've brought up. I think they've been dealing with this matter of speeding down Kuaheleani, which is endangering their keke going to and from school. And so it's been an issue they've been wrestling with for about a year now. So thank you for looking into that. Thank you for getting DTS to work on that matter and provide the study. Hopefully, we can connect DTS to state DOT since that's a state facility making the request and we can get government to align for the children's safety. I really appreciate that. Okay, uh, next up, we had is, I don't, is Falokimoto's representative online? Oh, hi, Poa. Sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your patience. That today is, the meeting has been going really, really good. There's a lot of good conversation in the meeting, especially about the dog park incident, which I'm very interested to hear about because I am a dog lover myself. I just wanted to give some announcements in regards to bills and also some social activities for this month of October. Our awesome office manager, Jocelyn, has dropped off the newsletters to the meeting, prior to the meeting, before it started. So if you guys want to definitely check out what we have in our, in our newsletter, that'd be awesome. The things that I wanted to do announcements for is the bills and resolutions that have been passed. So Bill 62, 2024, CD2, provides an exemption for veterans 65 years or older for motor vehicle registration fee for one vehicle. As long as they were honor, honorably discharged, then this is available for them. Bill 34, 2024, CD1, increases the assessed value threshold for properties that to be classified as residential A. Amends valuation tiers for properties classified as residential A transient vacation, and that will be effective July 1st, 2027. That's also in our newsletter for more details about the tiers. They are in, I want to say it's page four. The other things that, there's going to be a lot of activity, of course, now that the holidays are kind of rolling in. We're starting off with Halloween. So there's a couple of locations that they're going to be safe holiday, Halloween activities. Actually, there's going to be three. So District Eight Halloween activities in the Mililani area, which is Mililani Community Center, Trick or Treat, Town Center of Mililani, October 25th, between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. So just be aware that there's going to be a lot of trick-or-treaters. So be patient with the traffic on that evening because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of children. It's a safe and family-friendly trick-or-treating event with games, music, and festive decorations. The other one is that there's going to be a trunk and treat that CM Okimoto at our office will be attending this weekend. That should be pretty fun at the YMCA parking lot. We're hoping for a good turnout. Last year, I believe there was a little bit over 500 people that came out, so there might be more. But we do have some fun activities and it's a very safe activity that night. So we have that. The last thing is that we have an opportunity for everyone to subscribe to our newsletter now. Our monthly subscribe, our monthly newsletter, it's in our October newsletter on page six. You can scan the QR code and it'll take you right to the subscription so you can get an electronic newsletter that you wanted to look at. Other than that, I have, I'm open to questions. And I also put in any kind of important links or websites in the chat for anybody that has concerns. And I also wanted to double check about the DMV registration as well because that's, that's a pretty interesting situation. I always go to a kiosk, so, but I also go to the one in the satellite city hall in Hawaii Kai to get my stuff done if I cannot. But I probably want to find out about that. So I'm going to probably talk to the Department of Customer Service and see if I can get any information on that as well to help with Mayor's Office. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Poa. Members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? I see that Kate Ozawa has her hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure that one of the links you'll put in the chat is the link to sign up to Councilmember Okimoto's e-newsletter. Thank you.
Yep, we have, so I have the newsletter in the link, which you can actually double check. And then there is a QR code that you can take a picture of, and I'll send you right to that link.
Okay, further questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Trevor.
So just very briefly, so at City Council on October the 1st, I saw that Councilmember Okimoto voted with reservations on Bill 60. This is regarding arts authority to plan for extensions of Skyline. So could you ask the council member just to elaborate on that when we come back next month?
Sure, absolutely. I'll take that back to the office and I can give you an answer by next month's meeting. If not, then we'll email you and the board as well, if we get an answer sooner. Thank you.
Further questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office members? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much, Poa.
Mahalo, everyone. Have a great night, and I'll be online if you need anything.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, Kelly Anaya for Councilmember Wire's office. Over to you, Kelly.
Aloha, Chair and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just had a couple legislative updates. Councilmember recently introduced Bill 56 and Resolution 25-228. Both the bill and resolution would provide the community a stronger voice in the land use process. Oftentimes residents feel left out of the decisions that directly impact their community. The bill and resolution will require applicants that, for minor special management area permits or SMAs, as well as for minor conditional use permits or CUPs to present to the neighborhood board. The goal of the measures is to increase community engagement early on to help prevent future land use violations, costly litigation, and minimize appeals before the zoning board of appeals. Both of the bill and resolution are pending in the zoning committee. Councilmember also introduced Resolution 25268, which would urge the Department of Planning and Permitting to create a public database of all discretionary permit applications, which would include the minor CUP and SMA permits. DPP already posts the larger permit applications for public review, but some of the minor permits are not included online, even though those can oftentimes have a meaningful impact in the community. The resolution was referred to the zoning and planning committee, but has not been scheduled for a hearing yet. Also wanted to touch upon board member Nagamine's report about the, some of the changes to the bus route because of the new Skyline segment. Also wanted to report that the higher demand routes, which include routes 40, 42, and of course 51, have also been adjusted near the Lagoan Drive Station to improve access to the airport area. And then lastly, as you may be aware, excuse me, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Excuse me, Councilmember was honored to recognize the Domestic Violence Action Center, or D-VAC, at our full council meeting earlier this month. As you know, D-VAC works to break the cycle of violence and promote healthy relationships in Hawaii's diverse communities. And as a former domestic violence prosecutor, Councilmember has seen firsthand how D-VAC has changed lives and just wanted to recognize and thank them for their outstanding contributions to our community. And that's all the updates that I have right now. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Mahalo, Kelly. Members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions for Councilmember Wire's office? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you for having me.
Have a good night. Next up, Trevor for Senator Kidani's office. Go ahead, Trevor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Trevor Nagamine. I'm here on behalf of Senator Michelle Kidani tonight. So just some remarks from Senator. First of all, she would like to encourage any families who have experienced a change in income as a result of the federal government shutdown, that they can apply for free or reduced price school lunch meals. The application for that is on HawaiiPublicSchools.org, and Senator has also posted information about that to her Facebook page. And she would also like to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. She did include some safety tips on her, on the back page of her newsletter, although I think HPD already went over most of these. And one more thing, she would also like to congratulate Dylan Gabriel, Mililani High School class of 2019, who is now playing professionally for the Cleveland Browns. So other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Congrats, Dylan. Members of the board and members of the public, are there any questions for Senator Kidani's office? Seeing none, thank you so much, Trevor.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I see that Charles is online for Senator De La Cruz's office.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Ken, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Board, and community members. Just a quick report, the DOE and the city are still working out the parking agreement for Mililani Middle School after hours, but learning from last night's board and Mililani Malca that the city is planning to sign it and bring it back to DOE shortly. I'm going to also talk about Act 310, which was SB 933, which appropriates an additional $50 million to the nonprofit sector. The applications are open and closed this Friday, October 24th, at 4:30 PM, and the hearing will be scheduled at a later date. And then there's a Central Oahu Regional Job Fair at the Waihewa Value Added Center on November 14th. And that's all I have for you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Members of the board, members of the public, are there any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? Mary.
I've been reading in the paper about the Central Oahu kind of Waihewa cafeteria facility where they're going to be centralizing the school cafeteria lunches. Can you tell me more about that and if you know about it? And if you do, and it's really happening, why we need it? Sounds like there's like $85 million that's going to be involved.
Yes, I believe you're talking about the, the regional kitchen project that's going to be located. It's going to be centralized kitchen for the Mililani Wailea Leihua complex. It's going to be in Whitmore, and it's part of the Nurturized Future Initiative, which Senator De La Cruz, the First Lady, and other legislative members are a part of. This is to, because all school lunches currently are being imported from the mainland. So building regional kitchens here will allow local farmers to upscale their products and have kids eat nutritious meals built locally here instead of DOE spending, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but spending money for school lunches to be imported from the mainland. And so it's, it's a, it's also a way to diversify Hawaii's economy and to step away from tourism. And so there's a plan for regional kitchens to be on all four of the main islands and then satellite kitchens on the smaller islands. I can give a whole presentation on it next board, or I can, if you show your, give me your email, I can send you a, a follow-up email if you'd like.
We can consider a presentation, not for November. November's going to be pretty packed now. We could consider a presentation in spring of 2026, and I can work with you and perhaps would the board appreciate a presentation on, on this initiative in Central Oahu? I'm seeing some head nods. Okay. So we can, Charles, I'll reach out to you and your office and we can arrange something.
Yeah, sounds good, yeah. Yep, yep, okay.
Further questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much. Okay, To, I, Toza, I was just going to recognize you, but we got, I want to see if there's Representative Matsumoto online or her representative. Okay, guess not. Okay, Toza for Representative Lachika, go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Bass, members of the board and community. Toza Lovendon here on behalf of Representative Lachika. She is unable to make it tonight. She is currently in San Jose for the annual NCSL Jobs/Workforce Conference. However, she sends her warm aloha for tonight's meeting. I have dropped some things in the chat just now. So the October 2025 newsletter link, the 2026 pre-legislative survey, the Filipino-American History Month events website, and the email for my shameless plug. If anyone is interested in applying for the House 2026 Legislative Session, I've dropped the email that you can send your resume to in the chat. So if you're interested, you want to make a change, come on down to the House. We are the best side. So a few points from the newsletter, when you're talking about House and Senate, that's, that's, that's what I mean. House and Senate, House is the best side. You could correct me if you want, but that is my opinion, so. On October 1st, we led our first community agrivolt take site tour at Mililani Clearway Energy, where solar and farming come together. Thank you to the over 20 participants, Representative Matsumoto, teachers, principals, and DOE representatives who attended. We look forward to future events and stay tuned to our newsletter to find out what's upcoming. On October 2nd, Representative appeared on PBS Hawaii's Insights to discuss federal funding impacts on Hawaii. I highly encourage you to go watch that. It has a lot of important information and there was a lot of really good presentations. So that definitely does provide people with an overview on what's happening. Additionally, in the beginning of the month, I know that Charles already spoke about this, but Representative also, in addition with Senator De La Cruz, visited Boulder, Colorado to do a site visit. It is at the nationally recognized culinary center and regional food systems. The district's models connects local farms to school cafeterias, offering fresh, scratch-cooked meals. These insights will help advance the Nourishing Hawaii's Future Initiative, which Charles also spoke about, to build regional kitchens that strengthen food security, create local jobs, and provide healthy, locally grown meals to our keke. And then on the following 16th, we then promoted Hawaii's nurturing, nourishing Hawaii's future by attending a state testing of the new initiative with the Department of Education to create better school lunches, where Mililani High School students actually provided their input through surveys, helping to develop 50 new lunch items that will be rolled helping to develop 50 new lunch items that will be rolled out throughout the next couple of years. And again, as Charles mentioned, the regional kitchen will be built in Whitmore, and it will be an amazing addition to our already growing culinary design in Hawaii. On the 17th, we did a site tour of Konoylani Elementary to see construction of the new renovation for the kitchens and cafeteria. Again, more kitchen things. We're really looking to feed our children. And in this past Saturday, Representative joined the Mililani Homecoming Parade with her family. They dressed up as Dog Man. If you saw me, I was running as a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. It was a great time. Thank you to everyone who showed up and participated. And then she also attended the Homecoming varsity game. Good job on the win. Go Trojans! And last but not least, Filipino community engagement. So I've been talking about this all month. It is Filipino-American History Month. It is almost coming to an end. However, there have been a few events, so I'm just gonna touch upon those really quick. So multiple buildings throughout the month of October have been lit. Capital Modern, Hawaii Convention Center, Honolulu Halei, and Blaisdell Center. They're all celebrating by lighting their buildings the colors of the Filipino flag, white, blue, yellow, and red. On the 17th, we co-hosted the Filipino flag raising ceremony for Filipino-American History Month, along with the Philippine consulate Chair Talbo and the city and county of Honolulu. On the 18th, we participated in the Kamayan Filipino Lunch at Capital Modern, along with Chef Keloja and the Filipino consulate. And your last chance to celebrate Filipino-American History Month is this Saturday, the 25th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at Capital Modern, which is the festival finale featuring local artists, shops, food, and a special free concert from Grammy Award nominee and 2025 Tiny Desk Award winner Ruby Abara. Please visit PhillyRooted.com to claim your free tickets and get more information. That is it. I know I've talked a lot. Mahalo, Chair. If anyone has any questions, I'm here to take them back.
Thank you, Tosa. Members of the Board, members of the public, are there any questions for Representative Lachika's office? I see Karumi has her hand up. Go ahead, Karumi.
This question is addressed to both yourself as well as Charles out of Donovan De La Cruz's office. But in consideration, if you could possibly consider some of the the investigatory work that was done by the University of Hawaii Ag Division as far as farms on our North Shore that actually access R2, R3 water when growing edible plants, that we stay away from those types of farms because they actually contaminate our vegetable sources and our fruit trees.
Thank you. I have taken that, and I will relay it to Representative Lachika.
Further questions for Representative Lachika's office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Tosa. Have a good night. Okay, I see Representative Pruso is online with us. Go ahead, Representative Pruso. Welcome.
Aloha. So I want to talk a little bit about the work that we continue to do during the interim, because it connects to a lot of the questions around the implications of the federal shutdown, and then also the long-term and short-term implications of the big, beautiful bill. So we've recently come to discover that the challenges to SNAP will be almost immediate, especially in light of the federal shutdown. So we are working to make sure, as the Governor's Office mentioned, that resources are available to SNAP recipients. That said, we're working really hard in the House, at least on the Finance Committee, to figure out how we're gonna address the long-term fiscal implications. Because the last financial plan that I saw had us in the red essentially for four out of the next six years out. So given that kind of context, we're really looking at how we can restructure recent work that we've done around taxation, and also in ways that really don't affect our local working families as much and really kind of address the very wealthiest among us and ask them to pay their fair share. On the Energy and Environmental Committee, we've been working on legislation. I'm really fortunate to have a great chair on that committee, and I've been doing a lot of learning with her around plastics and EPR, and it's been especially useful considering our recent conversations around landfills and what we can do differently here. So in the immediate future, we are looking to revamp the bottle bill, and I'll have some legislation to share around that as we move closer to session. But Chair, I really also value your expertise, so I'll probably be connecting with you. We also are working on, and this is less relevant for the Mililani community, but some measures that address ag land use. So really reserving that and figuring out, like, if we are gonna cosite ag and photovoltaic, for example, that we do so in ways that continue to foster genuine agricultural work. On the civic education front, again, recognizing that Mililani High School is a school of democracy, I'm hopeful that there are other Mililani schools that also start to participate in that work and are recognized. I, we recently attended with several, actually several education leaders from Hawaii Schools of Democracy Conference, and I, I think that we could have the whole complex area actually be the first complex area that's recognized as a schools of democracy complex area. So all in, and connected to that, I wanted to also remind folks that we do, we have created a high school legislative internship, and we are now accepting applications. The applications are available on RepresentativeAmyPruso.com. And I encourage folks to also go to that website to sign up for newsletters and to get more information about our disaster preparedness work. And then thank you for providing the update on the Kalkona Hua LLC project and that updated request or the revised request for the minor CUP. And the 23rd tomorrow is the last day to submit comments to the DPP, and this revision is worse. So it's, and there's less ag in the project and more tourism. So I, I'm really hopeful that the DPP rejects this application and shuts this project down. So I want to thank this board for their support in that effort, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Representative. Members of the Board, members of the public, are there any questions for Representative Pruso? I see Brandon has his hand up. Go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, Callai, thank you for recognizing me. I was trying to get this in earlier when you were announcing it. Can we get links in the chat for the location to make comments on that planning and permitting test, I guess, review?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think Chair probably also has it. I know that the Neighborhood Board submitted comments. I'm not sure if you folks submitted on the revised, but yeah, I can put that in the chat. Thanks, Brandon, for that question.
As I shared earlier, yes, please share that in the chat. I believe it was an email to a DPP employee. I wasn't aware of an online form, per se. And as I shared in the September meeting, how we wrote our resolution, it was actually in the Be It Resolved clauses that we are urging DPP to, you know, it's not, this is not focused on one particular modification request or another. It's broadly written so that we don't have to keep coming back and adopting resolutions, whereas we can actually just encourage the DPP to suggest to the developer or even urging the DPP to, to make a decision to make this be a CUP major, thus requiring the EIS and the community outreach as the commie has requested. So kind of a blanket cover so that we don't have to keep adopting resolutions in the, in the Be It Resolved clauses of that resolution.
Perfect. Thank you. And yeah, so I did send my letter to the Chair of DPP, and I'll, I'll put that email address in the chat.
Any further questions for Representative Pruso? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you for your report, Representative.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go into announcements. It's nine o'clock. So this is a big one. Our next board meeting is not the night before Thanksgiving, because we adopted a motion to bump that up the week before. So this is, you know, typically our board is the fourth Wednesday of every month. This, this meeting will be on the third Wednesday of November. It is to be mindful of our board members and the public's personal needs for Thanksgiving being the next day. So wanted to remind that that meeting will be Wednesday, November 19th, here at each building and online, 7:00 PM. And I want to thank Sabrina for this reminder that she sent me. I failed to mention in my chair's report, so I will put it in here, that if you've noticed in our agenda for today, there was no SFA report on the agenda. Typically, we have a standing report in the monthly report section. SFA has requested that they provide a longer presentation, so that'll be at the November meeting. That presentation, they hope to share visuals and renderings for the development in lower campus. So for those who are very passionate about the teacher housing, or the teacher workforce housing project, and you want to see the renderings, the visuals of what this proposed project looks like, please tune in, please be present to the November 19th meeting. That'll be SFA's public presentation to comply with their draft environmental assessment review. Also, as a friendly reminder, we will be also taking up the dog-friendly parks motion at that, on that meeting time, too. So that might be a little bit of a longer meeting for November. That completes my announcement. Of course, our broadcast is on O'Lelo, Channel 49, and O'Lelo 54. It is now 9:02. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, members.